Going live. You're live, okay, it's working. Okay. Doug? Um, we're on camera, guys. Lou should be here any minute, too. Oh, no, I'm reading their letter into the record, because they were two hours away, so I offered to read it, so that they didn't have to come.
I don't know, I don't know.
All right, let's get started, please. I call meeting order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a seat, please. I see we have Doug Whipple back for another core duty. Well, welcome, Doug.
Welcome back, Doug. Okay, I'm gonna do the roll call. Member Huck?
Present.
Member Colin?
Present.
Member Toss?
Present.
Member Philip?
Present.
Ahem, member Whipple?
Here.
Ahem, Shandeleman is not here for the record, and Chairman Cornelius?
Here. Okay, approval minutes from, um, September twenty-sixth. All right, we have a chance to look at it. Any questions, concerns? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? None? Uh, first thing is Panera, they want a first request for a ninety day extension of final subdivision site plan approval. We're gonna read their letter.
Yes, I'm gonna read the letter that was received November eighteenth. Um, dear Ms. Carly, I represent, this is from Ira Emanuel, attorney for the applicant. I represent the applicant in the above referenced matter. Conditional final plat approval was granted by the planning board at its July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen meeting. Unfortunately, the actual resolution of approval was not filed until last Thursday, November fourteenth. It was provided to me the next afternoon. Under section seven dash seven two eight point seven C of the New York Village Law, conditional approval of the final plat shall expire with one hundred and eighty days after the resolution granting such approved approval, unless all requirements stated in such resolution have been certified as completed. The statute is not clear as to whether the hundred and eighty day period begins on the date of the actual vote or upon the date of the granting the resolution is filed with the clerk's office. As of this writing, I have not found any case law that examines this issue. I calculate a hundred and eighty days after the actual vote to be January twenty-first, two thousand twenty. With the holiday season approaching and not knowing the planning board's upcoming schedule, I am therefore requesting a first ninety day extension at this time. The reason for the extension is that the applicant could not know the exact requirements of the approval conditions until a formal resolution was signed, filed, and delivered to the applicant. This request shall not be considered a confession from the applicant that the tenure of the conditional approval began on July twenty-fifth. Rather, the applicant is exerting, exercising, excuse me, caution to avoid an untoward result. Please place this request before the planning board at its next available meeting. Very truly yours, I R M Emanuel.
Okay. Any questions, concerned?
Nope.
Everyone's good. Um, when would the actual ninety days start? The twenty-first of January or twenty-second?
The twenty-first of January.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve a ninety day extension for Panera for the site plan beginning on twenty-one January twenty twenty.
You need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have, uh, Reuben, forty-eight South Airmont Road. I know last time you were here, we looked at trees and calipers.
Oh, yeah.
One's being cut down and one's being planted. Then there was the drainage plan that you sent to Eve to look at, review.
And then there's copies of what you sent out, but not in packages. All right.
Violations. Uh, before we get started, what are we actually gonna do on the application tonight? That's what I wanna know. And I'm sure the board members wanna know. What are we, are we approving something?
Well, the last meeting, you couldn't approve the tree plan formally because it's tied to the drainage. They've now since submitted a drainage plan. So with that being said, you have the vehicle and you have Eve here to discuss that. And then there are a few other items that need to be discussed.
So we're approving the drainage plan?
The drainage, the entire.
Well, the project as a whole.
The project, and it's in entirety.
Maybe, um, Rachel can update us on the plan that was presented for review.
Sure. So, since last time I wasn't here, but Zoe had shown you what was going on with the landscaping and everything. In the meantime, we did soil testing out on the site to see what we could do for the drainage and make sure that the drainage design was sufficient. Um, we did the percolation tests and we were able to submit the results to the village and to Eve for review. Generally, it was consistent with what we were looking to do, but we need, you know, this out confirmed that we can use infiltration. So the layout and stuff, that's all, what you see was consistent. But now we know that the drainage should, should meet what we wanted it to do.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to add, at the prior meeting, there was a hesitancy to commit to a drainage design because the site was sort of a moving target and things were changing, um, from the plan that was submitted. So I believe Civil Tech sent out their surveyor and they have updated the plan yet again as of October, and I'm sure Lou can speak to that. But as of October, this is what was there. Um, so we had some confidence that the drainage that was proposed, essentially the trench drain around the pool, picking up the impervious areas from the dining patio, turning the mulch into, turning the walk into a mulch surface, and also cutting back some of the pavement of the driveway was sufficient to address the drainage. So I did prepare a brief letter. Um, and as Rachel mentioned, a perk test were performed on site to demonstrate that an infiltration system would work for the site. The patio and waterfall has been shifted out of the right-of-way. Previously, they were along the right-of-way that was on the, call it south side of the property. And I do note existing drainage patterns are to remain, so no increase in runoff is permitted. And stormwater maintenance agreement would be required to be filed with the village. So the system that's designed would be maintained by the homeowner forever.
Would you recommend security for that?
Uh, yeah, everyone should perhaps security, just to ensure that, uh, they get in the habit of doing it.
Is there a dollar amount that you usually use, or?
Uh, five thousand.
Five thousand?
Yeah, but the maintenance agreement that's submitted isn't, um, is just a draft.
Right.
What has to be done in the maintenance agreement, this is what the village usually sends out to the applicant, just to give them an idea. Uh, and I think this is a little bit of confusion, we probably should clarify it. But on Schedule A one, that's the schedule that has to be site specific. So right now it says downstream defenders, which of course there aren't any on this, it's just a residential property. So essentially, the items that need to be maintained are the perimeter drains and the seepage pits.
And that's it?
Yeah, and then the schedule is, um, I'd say, uh, there aren't any catch basins, as I said, perimeter drains, piping must be cleaned. So it's perimeter drain, um, piping, and seepage pits, and that would do it.
Okay, so just to be clear, that would be a condition if the board approved it. So stormwater management agreement, five thousand dollars security, and Schedule A, be amended, uh, to reflect the, um, matters that need to be, um, addressed in this stormwater management, uh, uh, agreement itself.
Right, that are site specific, yes.
Obviously.
Okay? Next?
I don't have anything. Since the violations.
And since the violation, I guess they stopped work.
No, they didn't. They got another violation after that on, uh, the eighth of October.
When, when was the last time you were out there?
The eighth of October.
Okay, it looks like the plan was as of the fourteenth. I don't know if that's when the field work was done, or that's when it was drafted.
They, they did the, uh, the, uh,
There was no.
The pit testing on the eighth.
Okay.
So, and then, and they did the pit.
So, yeah, so it was like, we did the plan after based on that.
Mm-hmm.
Based on the soil test, okay.
And they didn't stop it because of the pit testing. They were regrading.
So there were two different activities going on?
Yes, there were.
Are they regrading according to the plan?
I don't know, we didn't have those plans at that time, so probably not. They were just smoothing it out and making, moving mounds around and taking out other stuff, so. Yeah, I asked them to stop.
Okay. Any questions? Again, I guess we should make it subject to the Rockland County letter as well.
Which Rockland County letter? There's also the November eighth.
There was a new letter that came in from, um,
The one after November eighth?
The November eighth, I thought you had it. On Joe Lefanaba.
After November eighth or November eighth? The letter you're referring to is November eighth?
Yeah, that's the letter.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the G M L you have seen, I think you have.
Okay, so Rockland County Sewer District, number one, November eighth, um, subject to all the conditions outlined in that letter, um. We also have a letter from Towne Rappo, Department of Public Works, also dated May. Uh, actually, dated the eighth, but of now, um. Compliance with that. Signed Paul Gedansky. Um, a G M L dated May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, from Rockland County Department of Planning, compliance with all that. Uh, another letter dated May sixth, two thousand nineteen, from the Rockland County Highway Department.
That was in your previous package.
Oh.
I did say, please bring your previous package.
It states a road work permit must be secured from the Rockland County Highway Department before commencing any construction work, uh, in the site, which obviously hasn't been done, but my question is, is South Airmont Road
That's a county.
County?
That's a county.
Like the County Road?
Yes, it's a county.
So. Mm-hmm. That is also a con, that would also be a condition. Eve, based on what you're hearing or what you heard tonight, um, do you think it would be appropriate to have inspection fees to, um, make certain that whatever grading has been done matches up with the, uh, possibly to be approved, uh, plan, um, in terms of what's shown on that plan, um, for, um, help me out here, these slopes, um.
Well, I think, yes, for the full plot plan, not only, um, inspection fees, but they should be required to submit an ASB plan. And, um, not only will the inspection fees be necessary for engineering review, but I believe, um, Adriana might wanna go over and look at the trees and all that stuff as well.
Mm-hmm.
So the answer is yes, an escrow is needed, and an ASB plan should be a condition of the approval as well.
Um.
Escrow for the trees.
Escrow for the inspection.
Inspection.
To, to verify that what is shown on the plot plans and approved maybe by the board is what is being built.
What are, what about, um, it, uh, planting, um, agreement along with security for two growing seasons, or something along those lines for?
In this instance, generally that's used for buffers, but in this instance, since it's in response to a violation for an excessive amount of removal, I would say yes. All of the trees that the board is going to determine are trees that were planted compensating for removals should be guaranteed for two growing seasons.
Let me, let me understand, are you saying that when we're planting the trees pursuant to this plan, assuming it's approved, and if the trees die, you have to put, you do plant, you have to, where you mass?
Correct.
That's what this is for?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, for two years.
Excuse me?
For two years, not forever.
Of two planting seasons, sorry, because generally after two planting seasons, they're established.
Oh, oh, okay. All right, that's reasonable, yes. Um, if you want us to make a statement that, well, I guess the approval condition on that, um, what in the amount of trees are you looking for for us to put into escrow to put the plants back in, in case we don't put the plants back in? I think that's what you're talking about, right?
Correct, so we have to, it'll be based on the planting list that you should provide for review. Uh, Adriana, and she'll take a look at it, and she'll see, you know, which are the trees, and then a number will be established.
Okay, and as for the agreement, Joe, I did one this week, I think. Uh, just send me, send, uh, a little bit of it. Um, so first I wanna send it to Suzanne, to Suzanne,
All right.
so that she has it, uh,
Don't have it.
Um, because I never gave one to her before.
Thank you.
Um, and then she'll get you. Nope?
Send it to you, I'll send it to you, Joe.
Okay, and just so I understand, the five thousand dollar escrow we talked about earlier was just for runoff, or was that for some?
It's.
No, to, to make certain that, um, the stormwater measures
Stormwater control.
are being, uh, reviewed, uh, and in the event that there's a problem and the homeowner doesn't correct it on their own, that the village could use that money.
Okay, could we have a, um, termination date for that?
It is built into the agreement.
I'm, I'm asking what, what did.
Five years.
So after five years, the five thousand dollars, assuming we don't have an issue, gets returned to the client?
Yeah, I remember to ask for it.
The, the, the condition of the stormwater maintenance agreement states that the homeowner is obligated to submit annual reports to the building department demonstrating an inspection was done, and if any cleaning, remediation, replacement is needed, then that work is also done.
And if it's not done, that, that money is, is already accessed. No, well.
So if the inspection isn't done, or the work isn't done, that money can be utilized to do it.
Okay, I'm good with that.
To make certain that the condition.
I don't know who knows that.
The way we do it is, if the board approves all this, um, when you have everything together, um, you're put on the C D O C agenda, the professionals review the various, um, documents and issues that they're responsible for. They would sign off on it and authorize, at that point, the chairman would be authorized to sign the map.
That, that's before or after construction? It's gonna be after construction, right? Because you're gonna want the ASB in that C D O C, and you kind of, the ASB must be filled.
No, the ASB will come later.
The ASB will be after.
This is to get the work.
So then what are we doing now? I don't understand what are we, what, then what are we doing now?
Now you're seeking approval from the planning board to do the work, some of which has been done already.
So right after this approval, assuming it comes, you're gonna be referring us to C D O C to have our, our professionals, new professional professionals, to do this again?
I, I wouldn't refer to it that way. I would say.
It's sort of like a checklist, to have all of the items that are conditioned, ensure that they're submitted, and then the plans are submitted, and it gives the chairman the ability to sign them, and that's your official set of plans that you should be billed into.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be signed by the same planning board chair, the, the.
Exactly.
Right.
Yep. But to be clear, for example, this, uh, agreement that I spoke about in terms of, uh, the tree plantings, you don't have that.
Right, I understand, you need to have, all these things we're talking about done.
Yeah.
If it's put in a little box, and make sure it's in a little box, and, and, and it won't breeze, and then it goes to him for signature, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, I'm not great, but that's up.
No, I understand, I.
That's not a word.
It, it is still a public, it's a public right.
Yeah.
I'm not, no, you're not.
Yeah. I hear you. Now, obviously, just to be clear, even after the five years is over, uh, if the maintenance is not done, I'm reading here that the village has the ability to add on to its taxes.
Correct. The homeowner is al- always obligated to maintain the system. The, the property owner.
Well. Look, if, 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 if storm comes and the neighbors are affected, I understand, if you have an agreement, they're supposed to do something. Makes sense.
Anything else in the planning board? It's actually state mandated, no?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, public hearing, please be identified, state your name, where you live, and.
How you doing? I'm Jim Burns. I'm a resident of the town for the last twenty years. My property borders Mr. Reuben's property. So can you explain to me how the process works when you apply for a permit to cut down trees? What happens? I wasn't here for the last meeting.
Oh, you missed a good one.
I guess I did, but could you enlighten me?
Well, there was more than one meeting, just to be clear.
Couple meetings on trees.
Okay.
Um, I want to take this on. Okay, under our code, uh, you're not supposed to cut down more than
Three.
Three, three trees. Three trees.
Okay.
Uh, without seeking planning board approval.
Okay.
Um, this is, I, you could probably characterize this as, um, rather than seeking the approval before, seeking forgiveness afterward. And, and, um, they have worked with the village's professionals, um, to, um, come up with a plan. The board hasn't voted yet.
Right.
Um, but to come up with a plan which would, would have been taken into account even had they, uh, first applied, rather than applied and then asked for forgiveness.
Right.
Um, and I think you also heard that, uh, um, the building inspector, uh, referenced that there are a number of outstanding violations.
Right.
Um, the way it typically works when someone gets violations is that, um, boards are often asked, once again, uh, after work has been performed that wasn't authorized, uh, to review that work, and the applicant seeks to get.
So how many trees were actually cut down without a permit?
Thirteen?
But, it was thirteen, and then they came to a planning board, got three approved,
And got three more.
so that they could work on the pool. And then on the whole plan, is that, what's coming down, was it thirty-six?
I think it's another twenty-three, isn't it?
Well, twenty-three, but in total, I think it's thirty-six, but it's another twenty-three.
Yeah, uh, total is thirty-six.
Yeah, I was right, thirty-six.
But we're, but we're adding, how many trees?
Yes, but they are adding, we had an arborist come, go visit the property.
Right. Hundred twenty-eight trees, what size?
Some of them are low, other.
Uh, they vary in size, but, uh, they range from ten to twelve feet or three to three and a half inch caliper on the large end, and the smaller end, seven to eight feet.
Have you been to the property? Okay, so that's a lot of trees that were cut down. And I actually witnessed them personally removing a tree with a machine after you guys gave them a cease and desist. All right, so I'm just concerned, as, as a resident who's been here, a taxpayer for twenty years, that this isn't the first violation that has occurred. There have been previous, and I just wanna make sure it's done right. That's all I'm asking. Right? They built a rock wall on my property. I asked that they have a permit for that. I asked them that they had irrigation and drainage. Oh, yeah, we have, we have a permit for it. There's no permit. They just applied for it recently. They were out working on this property last Saturday. I called it in, I called and asked, I said, did they have a permit? Look, I'm not asking for anything that none of you would have asked for. This is all by the book, but I just don't feel that the board is either taking this seriously or addressing a matter that you can do the damage and then plead ignorance. And I'll let you finish what you were saying. So what actually happens after you cut a tree down? Do you get fined? Yeah. Okay, have they paid their fines?
The, the, I don't believe, does it ever been adjudicated in court?
No. No.
So what's, what's to stop them? I don't understand.
We're, we're dealing with it through this method, rather than taking it to court, finding them.
So how, how do you move forward without remediation on something they did illegally?
Mm-hmm.
We're putting up a hundred twenty-eight trees.
That's not the, that's not the answer. The trees are already down.
We took down thirteen trees, but.
Big trees.
We took down thirteen.
Big trees.
We took down thirteen trees, we went through, a arborist came from Connecticut, not that I hired, not that my client hired, it was hired by the village. The village found his person.
And what's your point?
It, it, it actually is a very important point.
Do we have an arborist? Sure, I get that part.
Okay, I, I can't recall, um, when the village did this, uh, before, but I've also can't recall that many trees being cut down. Um, the, you, I think a lot occurred at the previous meetings and C D R C meetings that you were, I weren't able to attend for whatever reason. And I think if you had seen the whole entire process and concern that was raised, uh, at each meeting, um, and, um, I'll even give the applicant's, uh, professionals credit, the cooperation that they showed, um, with the legitimate scur, uh, concerns that have been expressed by the board and its professionals, um, that, uh, what has resulted is certainly, um, a better, um, solution than just bringing them into court, constantly finding them. Um, uh, yes, would we prefer, obviously, if, uh, everyone complied with the law in the first place? Yeah, I, I, I will be the first to counsel that and stipulate for that. But we're taking what was done and trying to recreate, um, a future for this property that will hopefully, uh, with regard to the number of trees, and ultimately the size of those trees, ameliorate many of the concerns, um, that not only you're expressing, but the board and everyone who's looking at this.
Okay, and are you guys convinced, is the board convinced, who's done the work on the subtest and the flow rate test, that water won't run off into my property?
That's why we hired the engineer.
Yes, I, um, I have reviewed the plan, and as you know, there some of the water currently does slope towards your property.
Yeah.
So they're not going to stop what is the natural slope of the land.
Right.
But they're not gonna add to the runoff due to the improvements they have constructed.
Well, the rock wall that is, the rock wall that's built there, have you seen it?
No, I haven't, I have not been to the site recently.
Okay, well, take a look at it, and you tell me if the three, the three-foot rock wall doesn't, water doesn't flow onto my property.
I will be looking at the site, yeah.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's sixty feet long between. Okay, 'cause that's that's sixty feet long between two and three and a half feet high.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and and again, it's not just my house, it's below and if it goes below my house, it goes to the Smith's, Jones's house and it's number fifty-nine.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, 'cause that's where the natural slope of the land runs towards fifteen, right?
Right. Right.
No, but those items, that's why we were saying escrow will be posted and that will be um observed and watched and directed during construction.
Mm-hmm. Okay, can you can you guys assure me that no additional trees will be cut down between now and the time the property is done?
There's a tree plan and then we'll.
Right.
The three, yeah, the three of the tree plan, that's what they'll be doing.
Okay, and what happens if trees are cut down? Then what happens?
Let's be clear.
There will be trees cut down, here's the plan.
Because you know, you know, you know, you know, it's very clear to you.
I understand.
No, no, you don't, you don't, it's very clear to you.
Yeah.
There will be trees.
When they took down thirteen trees, they're taking down some more, but they're putting, they're putting a hundred twenty-eight.
I understand that, I understand the white circles, I know the trees that have identified. What I'm talking about is there are five big trees and I'm concerned that I'm gonna come out one day and they're gonna be gone.
Nothing, there is not.
And then you guys are gonna say to me, sorry, it's it's another six, six hundred bucks a tree and we'll find them and that's it. That's what I'm concerned about, guys, 'cause that's what's happened.
Maybe you can present your plan to the resident so he knows what the intention is.
I do. Have you seen the plan?
I have. I've seen the plan.
So there, they show, so which are the trees that you're, they're back there.
So guys, this right here, this right here. This right here, yeah, this is my property right here. What does this represent right here?
Those trees are uh are providing drainage.
Mm-hmm, right, and where are you actually gonna plant them? That's what I'm asking, have you seen the property where the with the, where the coping comes off the pool to here? How much space do you think that is from where the rock wall is on my property?
I'm going off of what we have, this is what we have.
Okay, I'm just, I I'm just asking because it doesn't seem like there's enough place to put meaningful amounts of trees, a hundred and sixty that you're referencing. So I'm questioning because I'm seeing what they took out and I'm not so convinced that what you're gonna put back in is gonna stop the waterfall. This is all hardscape. I used to put pools in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Fifty feet by twenty feet with an inch of rain is six hundred and twenty-seven gallons of water that come off a hardscape. That's gotta go somewhere.
Part of the drainage plan has a trench drain.
Okay.
That they will be installing.
No, it's a perimeter drain around the full pool.
Why wasn't that put in before they put the rock wall on?
I can't answer that question.
That's something we can ask very quick.
Okay, but you get it, you understand why I'm frustrated.
No, but that's, and that's part of what this review process will get taken care of and so that's all part of what they need to do um before the, you know, as part of this process. And it'll be inspected by the village, um and that's been part of our design process from the stormwater, looking at all that. And obviously the pool is the thing that's going to create the most runoff so that is why we have a trench drain to collect that, you know, that's something we looked at.
Right. All right, and what happens, what does the town do if if the remediation you put in on the drain you put in doesn't work? Then what happens?
The village has money in escrow um that they can make repairs to anything that is something that needs.
Which is my recourse on this.
Well, I.
And would I come back to the town and say what?
No, what's gonna happen is the plan is gonna be implemented if for some reason um, you know, when the soil testing was done, of course, it was done in certain locations. If for some reason during inspection, if the soil conditions vary, they may have to amend the soil. If there's any problem that there may be slight field changes to accommodate just those items.
I understand that. Right.
But they will not get a final um C O for the improvements until it works.
Okay, alright. I mean, I have to take your word for it, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's why you guys are here. You guys make the big decisions. Like so far, I've seen multiple violations on this property and so far they continue to go forward without paying their fines, I believe, right? Have they not paid their fines?
They haven't been fined.
They haven't been fined.
Not for the trees?
They were not fined.
They're in court. They have not, it has not been adjudicated.
Well, who holds them accountable?
Uh that would be up to a person in a black robe.
No, no, it's the town.
It would be the village.
The village shut us just yet.
Right, and you guys would rule on the on the.
We don't rule on that, we get the plan and we.
Well. Right, so you look at the plan, right, you look at the plan, you say in total, right, they've cut down these trees and even though they cut down these trees without permits, they haven't remediated with the process, right? You'll rule yea or nay going forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I'm good with that?
Just, I mean. Mm-hmm. I I don't know if you heard like the back and forth that's been going on with, okay, so one, we're requiring them to enter into an agreement
I have.
where they will post money um for um the trees they're planting and be obligated for two planting seasons uh to make certain that if anything happens within those first two planting seasons, that leads to um uh the, a tree or trees not surviving, that they will have to be replanted. Two, you've heard that they are entering into a stormwater management agreement where if, God willing, it doesn't happen, but in the event that you do experience a problem from storm runoff which is greater than uh what you're experiencing now, that the village is putting into place uh an agreement supported by escrow um for five years uh to make certain that that works out or to the best of our ability. Uh additionally, uh I don't know if you heard, but we're going to have inspection fees um and the village engineer uh will go out to make certain that what is ultimately built and during the course of construction.
As a practical matter, how how are you gonna enforce that? We're gonna randomly go out and check the number of trees, you're gonna check the drainage system and you're gonna, one, how many po- how many folks do we have here on our staff to do that in this town?
Well, we're consultants, the engineering staff is a consultant and the management staff is a consultant.
Okay. You get what I'm getting, alright, look, I I see what's happening around town, I'm just concerned that your intentions are good, I recognize that. And you're trying to put in safeguards to prevent stuff from happening, but how do you enforce that?
Well, probably someone will complain and then we have the plans and see if they meet the plans enough, something can change.
No, while it's being constructed, an inspector will be on site. But you're right, if things are done on Saturday or Saturday night or, you know.
They have to, they're not gonna do it on Saturday, so.
Yeah, or or Sunday, or he said they were.
Listen, they've been there on Saturdays and Sundays, sir. You weren't there, I see it right on my window.
See, the problem is whether they did it outside the realms of the plan or not. They got a plan that's reasonable. The planning board has to take a look at it, rely on the consultant's input and we make a decision.
I understand.
But if it was a reasonable plan and you deny it and I get a hun- no hu- another bargain to deal with.
Listen, I I'm not asking for anything unreasonable. What I'm asking for is to make sure that they go by the rules.
Right.
That's all, I I don't care.
I I hear ya.
That's it, okay, so if you have somebody cutting down trees they're not supposed to, you have them building something that doesn't have the right code, they don't have the correct drainage, they don't have the right slope.
I hear you. We all, we all feel the same way.
That that can impact. Right, so I'm not unreasonable, I'm asking my questions because I I'm a neighbor, I've been here twenty years.
But the thing is, once we, if we agree to the plan in this pass, then that's the clear rule.
And then you guys, you guys did it right, I'm I'm okay with that, but I'm asking the questions because I didn't understand how you can violate town building code and still move forward. I don't understand that. Call me stupid, I just don't get it.
No, uh I would say that uh what I'm hearing from you, I've heard for thirty years.
Yeah, it's a reasonable question.
Right.
It's it's not something that.
It's not a reasonable answer, that's the problem. It's just gonna happen.
Well, there should be a a more practical answer to 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 somebody who says, hey, you know what, I play by the rules.
Right.
Why, why aren't you?
I hear you.
That's all. Unreasonable.
No, I agree.
You all agree.
I think everyone here agrees, so.
But yet it happens repeatedly.
And you gotta deal with it.
Yep. Alright, so you guys are good with this?
We don't know, we can't even talk.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else from the public? Alright, I'll leave it open for a minute, so what do we think?
I I guess my only question is in terms of, is it proper to to vote when we have uh the violations that I guess from Lou's letter that's here? I mean, we have open unresolved violations, is it appropriate or proper for us to vote? Kind of going to what this gentleman just said in terms of allowing this applicant to move forward when there are known open issues that uh were constant violations.
Well, the violation was for working with us a permit, so once you've realized what the plan is and signed off on it, then they can get a permit.
Right.
So that was, it's, you you would need to complete what you need to do so I can finish.
So it's kind of a catch twenty-two, right?
Well, you have to, we can't let it.
Little fleet, just so be, I'm I'm sorry, I don't even.
Right, go ahead, no, we we can't just leave him stuck waiting for vi- you know, waiting for the issue of more violations when they, because they're gonna move ahead at some point, they can't leave it the way it is. It's half done.
Right.
So you have to approve what was already done as part of this plan so they can get a permit and complete it. They're still gonna go for, we're still gonna go forward with the violations, they're gonna have to pay a fine at the end.
Let me ask a question.
Right, but but the problem is, it's kind of a moving target, especially if they were doing work beyond when any of us were out on the site.
Right.
Right? So.
Well, what they did already is gonna have to come apart. The the rock wall around the pool is gonna have to come apart 'cause I could tell you there's no drainage behind it. There's none of, none of those pipes that you have on those drawings exist.
See?
So all that's gonna come apart.
See, I got them.
And so there's gonna be, everything that basically that they did, most of it's gonna come apart on the pool side, 'cause they gotta run those lines down to the pits.
Rachel, do you agree with that?
Yeah, so even I talked and my plan originally had it in the middle of the patio, if it had to go around the perimeter of the patio, it would still function in the same way, but they have to put a perimeter drain. So whether it's in the center of the patio or at the exterior of the patio, it functions in the same way. Um and they have to install it because that's where theirs runoff, um and if that means they have to tear out the outer layer of their patio, that's what they have to do, 'cause they have to meet your, what you're approving, um.
But they gotta.
So there's a penalty for not doing it correctly the first time.
Correct, so there's a man, have to fix it to make it what works with all of our, all of our plans, um.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want to ask a a question to the representatives and the applicant's representatives, and I'm not sure you have to answer, but why was there repeat violations? I don't understand, maybe the first time, I don't know, I'm from somewhere else, I know the law, but yeah, only twice came on you.
Look, I I don't, I don't know that I would agree that there were re- repeat violations. I I do agree one hundred percent that they went out there and took down thirteen trees and they should not have done that, that is correct. After that, after that, after we got involved, let me did inspections, I came to you and I said, please, you work around the pool and you let us do work around the pool. The only other work, I guess, was they they put in some of these rock walls and did did some drainage and that, I can't speak to why it was done. The um the the contractor misunderstood when I came to you and asked for approval to do work around the pool, he thought he could do more than he could do. But I, you know, look, Lou went out and issued violations and, you know, I don't know what else has been done since then. I heard this gentleman, I'm not in, I'm not in any way saying he's wrong, I'm not. Um were they, were they, were they moving along, were they, were flattening things out? I don't know. All I know is we have a site that's really not good now, it's halfway, halfway gone, it's been halfway done for a year now.
Right.
A year. They've missed out on using their backdoor for last season and I understand that you'll say, and you're right, that they do that for themselves.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with you a hundred percent. But I think the best thing for everybody is to take a plan that's appropriate and it's approved by the professionals on both sides and hold them to that plan. So he gets his his, you know, privacy in his backdoor, he gets the trees there that were saying should be there so he's not being interrupted by kids swimming in the summer. They get their pool and we all will vote.
Anything else?
So there were violations on the first of October and then there was subsequent violations on the eighth? Is that, is that what I understand? And we have potential report of of more, which I guess we're gonna have to investigate there.
Sure.
So I I I think the question remains that where does this put us? You know, are 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 these things part of the plan? Are they all gonna have to be taken down? I.
Well, that's up to them, they don't know what they did.
Yeah.
So until the plan is approved and we walk out on the site and say, listen, you're gonna have to remove this, this and this in order to fix it, we're just guessing.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, they they continue to work, they continue to do things that we catch them on, but if doing nothing and fighting over the plan is gonna continue allowing that to happen.
Yeah.
As long as the weather's good, they're gonna keep working.
Now, I think the thing is, our job is not to look at the violations, our job is to look at the plan and make sure we agree or disagree with what they're trying to do.
Right, it's my job to worry about the violations.
It's his job, right. Our job is not violations.
But ultimately, it's going to be up to.
But we do have to approve what has been done already.
The judge, yeah, just, they just file a, the law's violation, he's, he takes care of that.
Yeah, we approve the plan, we approve what we want. And if what we did did not meet the plan, they gotta take it apart.
Okay.
So if they build something out there and it's not what we're showing, they're gonna have to make it to what we're showing.
If they don't.
Right.
Um, so we went out there a month, a half ago to locate what had occurred so that we could try to limit and make it match as much as we could what had occurred, but I don't know what they, I can't keep up, you know, I can't have someone out there on a weekly basis. So if they continue to do something that they shouldn't, that's at their own risk and if they had to take it out, they have to take it out.
Yeah.
And that will be up to Lou to do, but if you have a plan that you can approve
Yeah.
or to to ease, then if you have something to, that you wanna approve, then we have something that they have to work off of and we can go forward with that.
Right.
And there might be changes, but that'll be approved by either the.
Mm.
Right, there, I anticipate there will be minor field changes, but if there's anything substantial.
Right, there's gotta be some field. They gotta come back.
They have to come back and then again during the planting plan, as the gentleman noted, if certain plants or trees can't fit in certain locations, there is gonna be some flexibility
Right. Right.
uh working with Adriana on where the plants can be placed to most be, be most suitable to be a viable.
Yeah. She knows plants.
Correct.
I don't, don't ask me anything about plants.
Eve, quick question for you, um, 'cause I I think Rachel, right, you were, you talked about this drain that goes around the pool
Yeah.
and right now it's, I guess it's essentially between the pool and the patio. And I understand that.
No, the drain is a, there's a perimeter drain around the full pool patio.
But but not on the outside edge of the patio, the way it's done.
Yes, that's where it goes, on the outside edge of the patio.
Yeah, of course, kind of a.
But you're saying it's not big enough?
Yeah.
I'm saying this looks like it's, it's.
I.
Oh, 'cause I think I've had it like kind of like in the patio, not the exterior, but I think it's, either way it functions the same way.
Yeah. The plan I.
Right.
The plan I have shooting around perimeter.
But. So my question, is that a minor field change or is that something they would have to come back because if it doesn't match with, on drawing work, please?
Well, the way, the pool deck has to be sloped away from the pool, so the water runs away from the pool.
So I, if you wanna do it as a condition, I can move it so it will be around the perimeter.
So I.
I think I had it in the middle initially, um.
Right, so this, oh yeah, I see, I was.
So I can move it to the exterior, um, by five.
Around the perimeter, right, the water isn't running into the pool, the patio, the deck runs away from the pool.
Of the way.
That's per health code, so it will be around the outside concrete deck of the patio.
And that would be the most appropriate for the quarter, sir.
Yes, yes.
But I want to see. So that you're catching the runoff and all of the runoff from the patio, not just.
Right, it has to be greeted away from the pool, correct.
Oh, it's.
So we, what is the condition of a perimeter?
Well, it's a perimeter drain around the pool patio, right, not around the pool, it's not around the coping, it's around the patio.
On the front. That's a little more cool. So it's incorporated.
Thank you.
So the trench drain, it it's on the diagram is correct or is that gonna be moved?
No, it's around the outside of the pool patio.
So it's gonna be moved outside the patio, so this is not correct.
Correct. The patio slopes away from the coping.
So that was one of the conditions. If you grant that, it would be the condition, so the plan that gets signed would show it on the perimeter. And they will still have the underdrain that connects them to the dry well. But the area that it treats is the same, so as far as like the design and.
Right. And it's gonna be out.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna connect to the drywall that we're.
Correct, and it's piped to the drywall.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And there's also a perimeter drain around the patio, the sitting area, um I think it says dining patio or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Hold on, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any drains behind this, what, you have like a?
Oh, a little neebore drainage.
Yeah, there are many.
What will be?
Eve, Eve, how big was that? The, Eve, how big was that around the patio? Just one side?
The dining patio, was that all the way around, or just one side?
Just that one side.
It depends on how the grates are gonna be sloped, so that's gonna be determined in the field. So if it's pitched one way, it's on the low side, of course, which I anticipate a patio would be.
Right.
You wouldn't necessarily mound the patio, it would have a cross slope, so it'll be along the low side of the patio.
Yeah, if you wanna have a runoff. Right.
Yeah.
And typically, the perimeter drains are like a four-inch perf pipe, surrounded by clean stone and filter fabric.
Mm-hmm.
So it can percolate into the ground as well as be piped into seepage pits, to pull it away from the pool area.
Yeah. Anything else? So what do we think? We good, we bad?
Anybody else from the public who wants to speak on this, before we close that public hearing? Uh, make the motion.
I can speak.
Don't want to stand while I.
Why don't we make a motion till we figure out we're good?
Um, let's make, let's, let's, give it up.
Yeah, what I do, you know, you gotta close it to the next meeting, give it approved. You are.
I've sounded a hundred.
Where do you live?
Forty-eight South Edmond Road. Um, and I wanna give you a little.
Where you live at forty-eight?
Yes.
He's the owner.
I'm the owner of the property.
Oh, so someone, here, here you are, we're talking about your property.
Exactly, it's, 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 it's been a while. Now, let me just tell you a few basic, uh, so you understand where I'm coming from, so hopefully it helps you with your, whatever your decision is. I bought this property, um, for, to enjoy Earmont and to be a good resident in Earmont. Um, when I bought it, my plan was to make a swimming pool, like anybody else out there buying a property and wanna make a swimming pool. Um, I had also a little vision of maybe have some nice landscaping. Uh, as anybody else would know, that in any, I don't think, I mean, anybody that you talk to in Earmont will tell you that if you wanna add some grass and you wanna do some pavers, um, yeah, you go, some do it with the permit, some, I, it's, it's even a question if you have to get a permit to do some grass landscaping. Um, but I was new. I came in and I hired a landscaper. Um, I told him what I wanna do, and he said, he said that, no problem, we'll go for a pool permit. I followed whatever he said that I should do. We went for a pool permit. Was granted the pool permit. At that point, I took down trees. Now, I understand I went on a line, which is probably not, again, I did not grew up in Earmont, and I did not exactly understand and know, um, again, anybody that, if, if you think a little bit outside of your box, and you think a little bit of my shoes, where I'm coming from, I was granted the pool permit, uh, I was, I gave a plan. I didn't think that at that point, by taking down the trees for the pool, I'm going to a place where I don't wanna go into. Um, I did that, and that's when all the issues started, and people started complaining. I feel like people are complaining, again, it's not the discussion that I'm trying to have over here, that people are complaining because who I look. And I really, I am not that, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a person, I went to all the neighbors. Um, I'm a, there was actually, the reason why I'm speaking up is because at the last meeting, there was a neighbor who spoke out that I did a party, and she called, uh, the police, and I put back the news, that is untrue, a hundred percent.
Doesn't apply, would you?
I agree, but I still, I'm, it, it affects my image, and I'm clearing up my image. Um, so if somebody says that, uh, I did X, Y, and Z, I wanna clear it up, it's not true. Um, I actually have done, I owned this property for two years, um, I have done any party, okay, beside that one. Um, so I'm not a party guy, um, however she want, she wanted to friend. I'm here in front of the village as a resident in Earmont, almost two years going through whatever I'm going through, um, trying to get this approved. I'm here to do whatever you guys tell me to do, and as you can understand me, I'm coming from, I'm not the richest man. I have spent over here, we're talking about in the thousands and thousands of dollars, just every time when you guys say, at the next meeting, this is costing me, I can bring you up my bills, every time the village has to read any paper, there was an arborist over here. I didn't hire that arborist, it wasn't any, uh, this, it was an arborist from Earmont, which I hired. He came down, he said that all the trees are, are not good, um, and then, and then it was three meetings, or two meetings, um, going through which arborist could come, which one. Once the arborist came, um, he gave a, he gave, he gave a plan, whatever that plan was, which was the same as my arborist, this is weeks, every, I paid for the arborists. Every time you guys make a decision here, there comes, a day after the meeting, there's a bill for me to pay. It's costing me thousands, I'm begging you. Like, this is a plan, it's, has landscaping, it has a pool, I have a family with two kids, I'm trying to enjoy life and be a good resident of Earmont. I'm begging you to please approve this for me. It's, it's at this point, the ne- if, if you, if, if you made me go through for another two, three months, I'm just gonna be in a place where I, it costs me a lot more money, um, and I'm just gonna be in a position where you're pushing me to, to do things which I don't wanna think of. I'm asking you as a resident of, of Earmont, just work with me, I'm here to do whatever you guys ask me to do. Um, every single time, the last three, four meetings, there was things done, uh, discussed at this meeting, I came back, I did it. I beg you, just don't throw it out and say like, uh, do this, and then have another meeting in four weeks. Every four weeks, there's, I have bills to pay, uh, the landscaper, people that did work over here, which I gave out so much money, people are not getting paid, every, everything is because of this. Um, and there's a lot of people who are, who are doing this landscaping, either from the pool side, which people are living in Earmont. They're making, they're making, um, business out of, out of what I'm putting into the property. Um, I think it dragged for enough time, um, I learned from my mistake, and at this point, I'm trying for the last nine months to be in any possible way, whatever you guys ask me, whatever the village, any, anything. I'm asking you to approve it, if there is a condition that you guys wanna see something else, approve it with the condition that this has to be, so I can go tomorrow and can start doing some work.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Lou, I have a question. Do you go out, you go out and look at the property before you approve a, a pool permit? I guess not, right?
Usually, yes. And I could tell you, in this case, the trees were cut down before he got this pool permit.
You do.
That's what triggered us to the property. A neighbor called about the trees being cut down.
But he said just the opposite.
No.
The trees were not cut down before that.
It, it wasn't that the case.
Trees are by law, it doesn't really matter.
The pool permit was not, approved permit was not approved till later.
So let's not go there. Let's just look at the plan, let's figure this out. Are we okay with the plan, is the question? Let's stick to that. I'm okay with the plan. Russ?
I was just basing the point of.
Hopefully, I guess, yeah.
Joe?
I'm okay with the plan.
Well, I'm also basing the other point of, uh, what, chicken on the egg, will be bringing the,
Chicken, I think.
addressing the violations, if you improve the, that, uh.
Yeah, violations are not our concern, nothing.
Yeah, nothing to do with that, that's all, look.
Our, our concern is the plan. That's all our concern is, that's all we worry about.
Conditional on.
Well, there's a bunch of conditions have to be met, but we can approve the plan subject to the conditions.
The thresholds are, um, in reading to it, that they're all the.
I believe so.
Yes, I think the drainage improvements should be implemented, and they should move along with construction.
Mm-hmm. Motion to close the public hearing.
Things, and.
That's what I was gonna do. Okay, I think.
I don't know, I think you have a, is five thousand dollars, that's going up over five years to cover things that could come up?
It's the standard. Well, that's part of the stormwater maintenance agreement that we request of everyone, and yes, I believe that would be enough for this site.
The standard.
Also, not all that we saw, unless we could, we could do it to cap, to cap this as well.
We can cap it, no, no, no worries. Alright, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I wanna make a motion to approve the plan. Can we call it the plan? 'Cause I know there's a couple things going on here. For forty-eight South Earmont Road, I know there are a bunch of conditions. Did you write them all down?
Of course I did.
You, you need to say them, or?
Um, no.
I mean, I know we got one, two, three, I, I, I gave all that for one.
You gave all that for one.
Well, the stormwater agreement and report, they need to do an ASBIL plan after, the escrow for the inspections. Um, there's a tree agreement that Dan's gonna send me that I'm gonna send to Turgon.
Yep.
Uh, response to, and, and shade tree for Adriana.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then they have to comply with the letters from the drainage, the Rockland County Highway.
The GML.
The GML, and the telegram for Department of Works.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Sewer.
The sewer, and, um, I think I got them all.
Did you get the drainage, uh?
The trench drain has to be moved around the patio?
Yes. Yep, the entrenched drain has to be moved around the perimeter on the engineering plants. Yes, that, before, when we. Yes, when we come back to the CDRC review, Rachel, have those changes implemented.
Right, go see that. Okay, that's the one.
And they have to go to CDRC and payment of all professional fees.
That's the motion. Second.
They close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
You wanna do a roll call, and we okay with that?
Okay, um, I will do a roll call. Mr. Phillips?
Approve.
Mr. Collins?
Hi.
Mr. Toss?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Chairman, pardon me.
For the record, yes.
Okay.
I don't wanna talk about trees anymore. I'm done.
Um, Joe, do you need the CDRC schedule, or do you want me to email it to you?
You'll email it to me.
Okay, and, um, I've had an application that I've been holding on to for some time, that I'm waiting for the architecturals. We, he plans on hopefully submitting them for the January meeting, there will not be a December meeting.
No December meeting.
There were no, there's nothing else, so there's no December meeting, which is good, 'cause we were having trouble with dates.
That's good, well, happy holidays.
So happy holidays to everyone, and, um, I will let you know about the January meeting.
Whatever you sell. Okay.
And.
And then I'm also trying to figure out when to do the ethics.
Yeah, we're trying to work out the ethics training, so I'll advise everyone on that.
Okay.
'Cause I know at least one of you needs one more credit hour.
I think it's me, I need one. What if I go somewhere else?
I need, I need something.
I did email you all those webinars that were one.
I think I need two hours.
I think you might need to, I have to look at the list.
Alright, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
And sexual harassment doesn't count, right?
No, and there is, there is a two-hour one that Arlene just emailed us on December sixteenth. Do you want me to email it all to you?
Thank you.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah.
It's a new one. Alright, I'll, I'll email the board.
Okay. Could I?
Can I? Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn in a second and a.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Is this seconded? Okay, thank you. Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I have to shut that off, and I have to shut that off.
Alright, I'll be dinner, I'm hungry.
That's right.
Um.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Don't forget about the, um, you.
My mom watched my sister.